I guess the last meeting.
Yeah.
Gail told her to go home. Yeah. I thought she might.
Two.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I have to say, uh, that means there are.
I was hurt seeing the long time.
Watching the clock.
There's only like, uh, three minutes left.
City Pete.
I know you're saying.
Better not tell him though, because he might run here yet.
We need a right time.
I'm sure we're, this super little internet work here.
Yeah, all right.
He has to connect a little bit. Where he is, I'm seeing, I guess he's in that little control room.
I would like to call this March 20th, 2008, meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Alright, thank you Kathy. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do any have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
I need to add a resolution expressing appreciation to Charles Martin for outstanding service to the community, and I would suggest that we consider that resolution at this time.
Let's do that. If we could ask Ms. Patty Martin to be recognized, if you would like to stand at the lectern there, I'd like to read a resolution that the city council would like to give to you. Whereas Charles Martin has faithfully served on the city of Cookville Historic Zoning Commission since 2006, having been appointed when the Cream City Historic District was created in June 2005, and whereas the creation of this important district was a direct result of Mr. Martin's tireless efforts in garnering the support of those merchants and residents that would be included in the district, and whereas, under Charles's watch and at his direction, the necessary design guidelines were established, and he along with his wife, Patty, secured the approval of those in the district in order to create the Cream City Historic District, and whereas, Charles Martin's passion for preserving the history of this city is evidenced by his purchase of the locally famous Cream City Building, and whereas, through the generosity of the Martins, the dark sign now glows and the community delights in the memories that the old Cream City sign evokes of an earlier time for grownups to remember and share with their children and grandchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Cookville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens of the city of Cookville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Charles Martin for the tremendous contribution he has made to preserving the history of Cookville and for his service on the Cookville Historic Zoning Commission. Now therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office adopted this 20th day of March, 2008. Thank you very much for all that you all have done for that part of our town. It's such a pleasure to live in a community where citizens take an interest and want to make their community a better place, and I think both of you and Charles are a shining example for the rest of this community, and I hope folks will follow suit. We appreciate your service.
Can I read something that you wanted me to read?
You sure can.
Yes.
Sorry. You wanted me to read this to you guys, and let you know, he says, "Dear friends, thank you for thinking of me. It was truly an honor being a part of the zoning board and seeing Cookville move forward. Being able to contribute to the city both my wife and I truly love is very exciting. Cookville has always been in my heart, it has been my second home, and finally became our permanent residence. If I am lucky, the good Lord will bring me through this, and there will be a chance to serve in the future. If not, I will serve from heaven. Thank you."
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have two items, item two and three.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
We need a motion and a second to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of the resolution, any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please cast your vote now.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Uh, the consent agenda, item two.
We also need to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Clerk's getting all over me over here.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, please cast your vote now.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
So we have a approved agenda.
Now we're ready.
Let's begin with our consent agenda. Item two, consider awarding bid for turnout gear, and item three, consider awarding bids for transformers, floodlights, and cable, electric department. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have our motion and our second. See any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, excuse me, please cast your vote now.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to our old business, item four, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held March 6, 2008. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. If you would, please cast your vote now.
Old habits die hard.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Get used to this new technology that we have out here. New business, um, item five, consider resolution 080310 relative to an increase in electric wholesale rates by the Tennessee Valley Authority sponsor, Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, as I'm sure you all are aware, back in February, the TVA Board approved 7% wholesale rate increase, and as you know, and as I've brought to you before, when TVA has a rate increase, we basically have, we have to pass that through. We can't absorb it. A 7% increase on the wholesale side to me is about $2.8 million, and we operate as tightly as we can. Our cost of power is like 85% out of every dollar, leaving us about 15 cents to run our operation, retire debt, all those kinds of things. The 7% wholesale increase to our residential customers, we looked at our average residential customer, using about 1,160 kilowatt hours a month, the change relative to this increase will be about $5 a month. And you probably know that TVA indicates that they're needing this 7% increase to fund new power generation and energy efficiency initiatives needed to meet the power demand in the coming years. And I'll answer any questions you might have, but I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Discussion by the council. I'd just like to say, and I think, Tony, that you addressed this, but I've already had folks calling concerned about this increase, and it's, as you said, we do run a very tight budget with the electric department, as all of our departments do, so we're just simply passing along our supplier TVA's rate increase basically onto the customer.
That's correct.
We're not generating any new revenue through that.
Not adding any new revenue.
Right.
That's correct.
Any further discussion by the council? I, just real quickly, and I know Tony and I have talked about this, but, you know, I kinda, I see this gonna be, this is probably gonna be a trend. We're gonna continue to see energy costs going up, and I know, you know, we've done a little research on the history of Burgess Falls and the generation of power down there, and I know, I don't think we've heard back through the, on the grant that Tennessee Tech has with the Department of Energy to study the distributed generation.
Correct.
But would it be possible that the city of Cookville could begin in maybe a different way, generating some of its own electricity each year to sort of help, could we calculate some way how we could figure out how we can maintain lower rates for electricity in Cookville? We'll never replace TVA, obviously, but by producing some of our own power, could we not reduce these spikes? Say, TVA goes up 7%, maybe we could just go up 5 or something like that?
Yeah, as you're well aware, Mayor, the problem that we run into, and we're continually looking at those kind of things, it's the cost to do those kind of things turns out being more expensive than what we're able to buy from TVA. But again, you know, we're providing some funding and some support for Tennessee Tech in their DOE grant, and again, we look at those kind of things almost daily.
Okay. Well, and maybe we can, I know, I've also asked once before, and I don't think we've gotten it yet, to see sort of a benchmark of how much power we buy from TVA each month. And I don't know if we can, you know, maybe at one of our meetings throughout the month, sort of do like we do for each of our customers, show how much, you know, energy used this month, this month, this month last year, and kind of begin to see what kind of trends in power usage we have as a city, and maybe try to begin reducing how much we have to buy from TVA.
Along that line, one of the things that Mr. Shipley and I have been working on is getting TVA's engineering staff, locating the users, city buildings, the higher users, and we've got them coming in doing inspections, and they'll be providing reports that we will share with the council to do just that.
I know Ronnie Kelly's department, you know, I mean, a lot of these departments, we use, just as a city, we use a lot more power. It gets more, it makes everything more expensive, so.
Sure.
Any other discussion by the council?
If I may, I'll mention one other thing that I almost forgot. You probably read also about some of the incentives that TVA is already providing, and we're looking at lots more with some of the money from this rate increase. One thing people can do to offset this type thing is go on the city of Cookville's website, go to the electric department. We have a link to TVA, or you can go to TVA.org, and you can do a home evaluation, and they will, from that, tell you ways to save electricity, and if you do that evaluation, they will send you a little incentive package that includes fluorescent bulbs and those kind of things, so.
That'd be good.
Like to remind everybody to visit that site.
Right, that is good. Conservation's definitely a way. I know Vice Mayor said she should turn her heat down, and, you know, we all need to.
Yes, but on more sweaters.
Conerving energy's probably the best bang for the buck right now. Any other discussion? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, please vote now.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Peak?
Thank you.
Item six, consider appointment to the Cookville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees sponsor, Mayor Salee. I believe we have received a recommendation from the medical staff at the Cookville Regional Medical Center. Actually, Mr. Shipley received this letter, and we've been copied on it. Looks as though the medical staff has nominated Mr. Doug Dykes, and I believe that.
Make a motion, we approve Dr. Dykes.
Have a motion to approve Dr. Dykes.
Agreed.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Any other nominee?
Yes. He was the only nominee that we received. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your vote now.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
That'd be good. Thank you very much. Item seven, consider appointment to the Historic Zoning Commission sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the current term of Ms. Alma Anderson on the Historic Zoning Commission will expire on April 4. Ms. Anderson feels the community in general position on the commission, and I believe, Alma, you've served since the creation of the commission.
Yes, I have.
Members of the Historic Zoning Commission serve five-year terms, and they're appointed by the mayor with confirmation by a majority vote of the city council. We've contacted Ms. Anderson, and she's agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and we recommend for her reappointment.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mills. Guess I'll make the motion then, that we, I don't know, let me think about it for a minute. Make the motion to.
I'll second.
To put Alma Anderson back on. We have a second. Any discussion by the council?
Well, I certainly think, this is one of my favorite things in Cookville, is the historic zone, and from the very beginning, it's been exciting, and to see new groups get added on, and to preserve what we have in Cookville, it's just a wonderful thing, and it's a neat board to serve on. It usually is fun stuff because people are coming to improve, to add to, and preserve, so, and I guess I can't vote for myself.
You might wanna.
You might not get a majority.
I better vote. Is that what you're saying?
I'm just kidding.
Please cast your vote now.
Four yes, one abstain, motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item eight, consider awarding bid for Jackson Street and Stevens Street concrete overlays at the intersections, sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised and received bids for the overlay of Jackson Street at Willow Avenue, Jackson Street at Jefferson, and Stevens Street at Jefferson. We bid it in two alternates. One is to do all the work in one weekend. Alternate two was to do Jefferson and Jackson and Stevens and Jefferson in one weekend, and Jackson and Willow in another weekend. The bids came in, is doing, the lowest to doing it all in one weekend, which is what we prefer. I would recommend the low bid of $197,295 from Highways Incorporated. Recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And this will contain any of the, as far as the signalization, the tripping mechanisms?
Yes, our crews will put the loops back in for the signals during the work, and our crews will take care of that. That's not part of the contract.
Okay, okay.
And when will you begin this work?
Well, it'll depend on the weather.
The weather has a lot to do with that, I guess.
We'll notify people as early as we can, but, of course, we don't want to schedule this for a rainy weekend, so, but it's a lot of concrete work, and they will be working continuously, but the whole weekend, they'll start on a Friday night and be finished on a Monday morning. So we'll have plenty of signage up, and this would encourage people to try to find alternate routes on that weekend, because you will not be able to get through the whole eastbound lanes of all these intersections will be closed.
Well, maybe the media can help us a little bit on letting the people know.
Well, definitely. I like the idea of just doing it in one shot.
That's what we thought, instead of dragging it out and making it worse for several weekends, we'd just do it and get it over with.
And this is a good long-term solution to the problem we're having with this pavement.
Yes, we, these intersections, we've resurfaced several times trying to correct it, and it just doesn't work, so this should fix it for several years.
Is this something in, in the future, where there, there'll be other areas maybe that need this same type of work, correct?
Yes, there's some that need it now. We'll do these and.
Kind of each year or something.
See how we like, and then maybe next year, we can do some more intersections that need it.
Okay, very good. Any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Item nine, consider amendment to the engineering contract with Crouch Engineering relative to the Rails with Trails project sponsor, Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, in December of 2005, we entered into a contract with Crouch Engineering for engineering services pertaining to the Rails with Trails project. Because there were so many unknowns surrounding the project at that time, what we did is we based that contract, or the design cost, on a $2 million construction cost. As a result of meetings with TDOT, they required us to do a master plan, and that master plan included the environmental review, planning, and probable cost. As a result of that, we were, we were able to get a better understanding of the cost of the entire project, and that was estimated at $5 million, and that's including 18 and a half miles with 18 sections and seven proposed trailheads. What I'm asking you to do tonight is to increase the design from 120 to 175, which is a $55,000 increase, increase the topographical surveying from 50 to 65,000, which is an increase of 55, excuse me, 15,000, and delete the construction phase engineering portion of it, because we do not have enough information at this time to calculate that fairly for both parties. So the actual contract at this time is decreasing to 342,000, which is a $70,000 reduction. Now keep in mind, in a few months, we will have to come back and add that engineering, that construction phase engineering in there, which includes construction inspection. TDOT is requiring, the Federal Highway Administration is requiring that we have an inspector on site all the time, so that, that's gonna, that's gonna put that cost up a little bit more. So like I said, we do not have enough information right now to give a clear picture of the construction engineering inspection fees.
Okay.
So I'm recommending that we do amend this so that we can continue with the design of the project.
Do we have a motion to amend?
Oh, moved.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
It's a reduction now, but then it'll come back and.
It will increase, yes, yes. But I just wanted to make sure that you had an understanding that the design and some of the surveying work is having to go up because of the, the increase in the actual cost of the project. We had $2 million, we got the $2 million appropriation, and we were trying to do things that would keep that project at $2 million, and there's just no way, because TDOT would not allow us to do a share the road type of facility in some of those more difficult areas like from Auga to Paragon, and there's some other areas up the mountain. So we, so we had to move the trail back to the right of way, which made the design more complex, and the surveying more complex. So that's why the, we have, we have had the increase in the design. But after calculations, we are still at 5% of the construction cost, which it's a typical, design cost is typically about 6%.
So what you're saying is, when you come back, the actual original numbers will be even more than what?
No, just the bottom, just the, just the construction phase engineering will possibly go up.
Beyond what you're decreasing it now?
Yes, yes.
But still within the, still within that budget that was talked about?
It will not be, no, it will not, it will not remain within $412,000, no.
No, the 5% or 6%.
No, the design, the design and your master plan is your 5%. Your construction phase engineering is in addition to that. And I might add that, that the Federal Highway Administration grant will pay for 80% of this.
Okay, so when it comes back and it's up, then who, who is gonna pay for this?
They, the grant pays for 80% of it.
And then the other 20%?
That comes out of the local money of the $400,000 that, of the local money. All, the Federal Highway Administration grant requires a 20% match, whether it's construction, design, legal, whatever.
Okay. But to ask Councilman Shelton's question again is, is we have set aside monies to do this, or money's been appropriated for that 400?
Yes, that money has been appropriated, yes.
That's where it'll come from, okay.
Yes.
We had, a couple of years ago, or three years ago, we allocated $100,000 to the Quality Alive Fund. That's where a lot of that match is coming from, then?
Yes, yes. And I might add that we have, with grants and local money and donations, we have $3.4 million in hand right now. I recommend your approval, and I'd be happy to answer further questions.
Do we have a motion and a second? We already do.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we do. Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Item 10, consider change order to the water plant intake project for membrane installation contingent upon successful price negotiations, sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we've, feel like we've successfully negotiated a change order with the prime contractor down at the water intake project for the installation of the membranes. And I'm gonna take you back, because it's been a while since we went through all this. I'm not sure if you can see it, but back in March of '06, we did a water plant land use master plan down there, and talked about how would we fit all of our expansion in in the future, and where would we place it, what's gonna be needed, and in that plan was a conceptual plan about how to capture the lagoon water that goes back into the lake, and that was the membrane project. So in 2006, in October, we did a engineering contract to go ahead and start the first, one of the phases of that report was to increase the capacity of our intake structure. So in October of '06, we did an engineering contract for that design. During the summer of '07, the drought hit, and we were pumping a lot of water out of the plant. So in our department, we were talking about how could we, how can we get more water through the plant next summer? We're gonna be in probably a construction project. We got the dam issue with the lake level low. What could we do? And one of the things we determined that we could do, we were gonna wait two or three years and do the membrane, recapture recovery water, and we felt like we could accelerate that schedule and go ahead, if we, if we could get it put in this summer. So we brought that to the council, and then we approved a engineering contract amendment to go ahead and do that design in November of '07. And in that discussion, we had talked about a estimated contract cost of about $1.25 million, with 725,000 of that membrane equipment and 525,000 construction, with a payback, project payback of about 3.5 years. December of '07, we awarded, council awarded the bid on the intake construction, which was a $3.3 million project, WNO Construction. And in December of '07, we bid out and awarded the membrane for that recovery water, and that was a $699,000 project. So then, we started negotiating with the contractor, the prime contractor, to try to see if we could get a, an acceptable change order with our existing contractor for the installation of those membrane units. And we've got to that point, that net number is $965,000. Now, the proposed total is 1,000, or 1,664,132. Our conceptual estimate at the beginning of the project was 1.25, with a difference of 414. So one of the questions is, why is the price more than your original estimate? Our original, original estimate was based on a conceptual location of where this membrane unit would be set, and that is the location here, where we were conceptually thinking about putting it, because the return lines are coming back from the lagoons, and that was a, just a temporary metal building to stick it there, and that number was based on a metal building per square foot. And so when we got into the detailed design, we ended up moving it against and on top of our clear well, and added a feed line, because we can pump more water from the lake up to the plant than we can physically treat through the plant. And the capacity of those membranes, there's another half million gallon capacity there that we wanted to utilize. So we also ended up putting a pipe around to be able to bring that water to those membrane units when we need it. By placing that on top of the existing clear well, we had to beef up the roof of that and go inside and put some more supports. We're going to line up the, the roof of that structure, we'll line up with the floor of our existing filter building. When this plant is expanded in the next phase, all the lab and all that, the laboratory and all the space in there now is completely inadequate. So what this will do, this will allow us to tear out a wall, and then open, and that will become the floor of an expansion on the upper level. will be, become the floor of an expansion on the upper level. All of that caused the cost to go up higher than what we originally estimated to be. That's what drove that cost up. The next question, is the change order price fairly priced? Our engineer performed an independent estimate with their structural and electrical people and went through and they came up with the $997,000, what they felt like was a fair price. This changes the payback on the project with the, the current proposed change order, changes the payback of the project from 3.5 years to 4.16 years and based on all of that information, we'd recommend approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No approval.
Have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
Originally, we talked about this because it was a method of conserving energy and as Sam was talking about earlier, because we're pumping all this water up and this is being discharged and this way to recollect it and reuse that water, correct?
Yes, it makes the plant about 98% efficient versus 80-some percent.
Yeah.
That's why the payback's fairly quick.
Any further comments from the council?
I think we should just, we should go ahead and do it now because we're going to have to do it and so, why not just do it now? It would be that much or more if we waited anyway.
Yeah, it's not something we want to do, but it's, I think it's in the best interest of the people getting water from the city of Cookeville and I would applaud Mr. Kelly and his staff for, you know, thinking ahead and planning something like this for us.
Thank you for laying this out so clearly. I think that was very good to go back and do this timeline again.
I apologize for not having all that Monday.
No, that's fine.
We were still trying to negotiate prices and get all that information together.
Looks good, looks good. Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Kelly. Item 11, consider awarding the following bids. Item 11A, natural gas system improvements, Gas Department, sponsor Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, the Gas Department has maintained an annual construction contract since the late 80s. The contract we have is expired, the one we just had with James N. Bush Construction had it this last time, it has expired. In February, we solicited bids again for the, for the contract going forward. We deliver those bids to local gas contractors in town, specifically JNS and James N. Bush Construction. We open those bids at the end of February and what we do is we solicit per-unit pricing for basically anything that we think might be installed in our system, things that would fall outside of the scope of what we can handle. Those bids, we compare those to the expiring contract that we've had, those prices, they're very competitive. We've compared it to a separate bid that we took on the Fairgrounds Street improvement for the gas system that was, that's being modified over there, that was a separate bid and we compared it, those pricing and this annual contract pricing is very competitive with those, also in many cases even less on some of the items. So, I'd recommend your approval of this bid and, and award it to James N. Bush Construction.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Unmoved.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 11B, radio console, Police Department, sponsor Bob Tierney and I think Captain Dukes, oh no, Chief is here, sorry about that. Didn't see you back there, you're looking so sharp there.
How could you miss him?
Mayor and council, if you remember, we allocated money in the, in the last bond issue to purchase a three-spot console, the one we're replacing is 15 years old. What we're asking you to approve is the consoles are on a state contract and the installation's included in this price as well, $115,461, we'd ask your approval. If you've got any questions, the folks here from Wireless that can probably talk a whole lot more about it than I can.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Unmoved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Second, I thought someone had done it.
Any discussion or questions about the council?
I think we talked about this, but this is movable?
Yeah, actually, this is, basically, it's a big computer, I guess would be an easier way to explain it. The backbone will reside in one place in the Police Department, it'll run independent of all other systems and as soon as you build this police station, be able to stun places. That's the game, it's plugged, I've got it anyway.
Very good. Any other comments, questions, comments from the audience, seeing none, all those, please cast your vote now.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Right. Item 12, hold a public hearing on the annual six-month progress report of the Plan of Services for the Bunker Hill Love Lady Road Annexation area, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you're aware, state law requires us to do a progress report on the Plan of Services within six months after we annex an area and annually thereafter. And we're also required, as we're doing tonight, to hold a public hearing on this progress report. The Bunker Hill Love Lady Road area was annexed in 2000 with an effective date of September 2nd, 2000. The progress report was recently prepared and published in the Herald Citizen. The report indicates that police, fire, solid waste collection, street maintenance, street signs, planning and zoning and recreational facilities are provided as specified. Those property owners already provided natural gas by the city have had their rates reduced to the city rate. Also, natural gas service has been provided to an additional approximately 14 properties. The Plan of Services specifies that natural gas will be provided to the area based upon customer demand and when economically feasible. Water service rates have been reduced to the inside rate. There remain to be 10 fire hydrants to be installed. Sanitary sewer and electric services have not yet been provided. The Plan of Services specifies that sewer service will be provided within 20 years. And as to electricity, it's what we always state, we're pursuing the measures to acquire the service area from the Electric Cooperative, which will allow us to provide electricity. However, we are currently in the process of designing the street lighting and that is the report.
Very good. We don't need a motion or second, okay? We're just hearing that.
No, just if there are any comments from the public, because I'll wait.
Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to make any comments about the Plan of Services? Seeing none, we'll move on to, thank you, Mr. Mills, we'll move on to item 13, receive financial statements of July the 1st, 2007 through February 29th, 2008, sponsor Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I'll try to be as brief as possible. We'll start with the general fund. That fund supports the police, fire, public works, planning codes and general administrative departments of the city. And our budget this year in revenue is based on $20,520,000 and currently, we've received $14,457,522, or 72% of that budgeted amount. Right now, all the revenue line items are in line with the estimate. We do have concern with our sales tax collections, as you see in the emails from the city manager, those collections have been decreases the past two months. We have budgeted this year, our budget, that $20,520,000 revenue is budgeted on a 5% growth in sales tax. We've revised our estimates and right now, we're looking at coming in below 3% on that growth. That translates out to possibly being short as much as $300,000 in sales tax collections. Now, we have a couple of revenue items that we hadn't planned on this year that we got to help offset that shortfall that we're going to have in sales tax. We received an additional $155,000 from the state hall income tax. We had not planned on receiving that much at all, that's an extra $155,000. And also, the, what we netted out in the charter audit, $114,000 that we received there. So, that helps offset some of the shortfall in the sales tax collections. And even though we have that shortfall in sales tax collections, we're still, we've revised our estimates for the rest of the year and we're still looking at hitting that $20,520,000 budget. Matter of fact, we're still projecting maybe possibly having $150,000 additional dollars in revenue. So, even though sales taxes are down, we still believe we're going to hit the, the total revenue that we have budgeted at this point and what the budget is based on. Stop me at any time if you have any questions. On the expenditure side in the general fund, we have expended to date 66% of that total budget. We have a total budget for the general fund of $20,020,000. Of that, $19,471 is for operations and $491,900 is capital. The majority of the capital has been purchased by the departments already. I think we have the sinkhole study in our planning and codes department that's underway, that, that, that money's not been spent yet. And maybe an item in the fire department has not been purchased yet, some optocom devices. But pretty much, the entire capital budget for the departments has been expended at this point. On the operational side, everything is in line. We have a couple of, of items in the general government department. If you look at your report, you'll see that it's 75% of budget at this point, we should be at 67. What that is, is the audit fee that we incurred for the franchise fee of, of the audit of charter, that $114,000 is recorded back into that line item, into the general government department. We have the revenue to offset that. We received in that total audit fee, we received $228,000 based on that audit, 114 of it went to cover the cost of the audit and we netted out the 114,000.
I have a question. How, in a couple of accounts, the capital expenditures exceed the budget, how is that possible?
In Public Works, if you look at that one, they had a capital budget of $103,000, we've got $121 coded there. What that is, is back in the fall, we had $44,000 site assessment for the cleanup at the old sewer plant. That was something we brought to you back in the fall to cover. That $44,000, I coded it to the, the capital budget for the Public Works Department because all their items have been purchased and they had come in well under budget, so I coded it back to that one. We have funds sitting in escrow to help offset that $44,000. Once we get everything taken care of at the old sewer plant, those funds will be released to us and we'll have money sitting there to help offset that $44,000.
Okay.
I think if you look at Leisure Services, they had $2,300 in capital and that was actually offset by a grant that they received for some work over at the depot. In total, operations are, like I said, 67% of operations and pretty much the capital has been purchased. The rest of the city's funds, going forward, if you don't have any more questions about the general fund, the rest of the city funds, just to be as brief as I can, are all in line with budget, don't have any issues at this point with those budgets. And I believe you have all that information in your packets and if you have any questions about those, I'll answer those. If not, that's all I have at this point.
So, even though we're projecting, we budgeted for a 5% increase, we're a little less than three, but we've done some smarter things and we're still looking good.
At this point, we think we're going to have the revenue to offset the expenditures at this point. Hopefully, that will continue, we'll continue to monitor the revenue, revise our estimates monthly and see what's happening.
Everybody needs to go home.
I was going to say.
Everyone should go home.
When, when President Bush sends us all our money, everybody's spending it in the city of Cookeville, don't take it outside of here.
The department heads are trying their best right now, they know how tight the budget is and they're trying their best to, not to spend money if they don't have to.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
What's the overage on the tree board?
Overage on the tree board? They have a grant to offset.
Oh.
That's a grant.
They have grant work there, so they've received some grant money.
Okay.
To offset that and they have that grant expenditures, that's the only thing that comes to mind right now off the top of my head, but I'll research that and get, get back with you on that one.
Okay. Any further comments? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. This time, we have our hearing of citizens and our delegations and we invite you to come to the lectern and spend up to three minutes sharing your ideas or concerns that you might have about the city or things that, things that we could do to improve ourselves. Does it look like we have anybody? I would like to make one quick announcement that we have a new exhibit at the Cookeville History Museum. It's been provided by a lot of work from the folks over there and it's a fantastic exhibit on the survivors of the Holocaust.
Liberators and refugees of the Holocaust.
It consists of the people who were attorneys at the camps, the hidden children, refugees and liberators from World War II and it's a fantastic exhibit. It was helped to put on, I believe, by the Tennessee Holocaust Commission. We're lucky that we have a state that's very concerned about the educational value of those events and I would strongly encourage you to come and bring your families and spend a few minutes looking at that exhibit. We're, how, how long is it going to be here, Rick?
Through the end of May.
Through the end of May, so, please try to make a chance.
And I second what Mayor Sully says and furthermore, all of the people who have their photos there live right here in the state of Tennessee, which I was pretty impressed with, with the number of people who live in the state of Tennessee who were so directly touched by the Holocaust and I really encourage everybody to go to that.
It's very impressive. Any other comments by the council or seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.